The Planning Commission meeting for November 25th, 2013 is called to order. First item on our agenda, we have some meeting minutes to approve. Do we want to go through each one individually?
Yeah, because people are missing from each one, so.
Okay. So.
If you read them, you can still vote on them.
I know, but I prefer not to if I wasn't present.
Okay. Can you all make sure that your mics are turned on?
On.
Thanks. Okay. So, let's do these in chronological order. The first one is for April 22nd, 2013. Does anyone have any comments or adjustments?
I just have, I have one on page seven where there was a, on the very bottom, there's the motion, and that was when, I believe, Carrie, you were helping us write those conditions of approval, and I'd just like to see if we could get those in as part of the minutes, add those back in. It just says, "Subject to the two recommendations by the Planning Commission," and if you weren't there, you don't know what those were. So, that was my only, everything else looked good.
Anybody else have any comments on those meeting minutes?
I concur with Denise's amended amendment to the minutes.
A move may be approved as amended.
Second.
Commissioner Espy.
Aye.
Commissioner Guile.
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff.
Aye.
Chair Kidwell.
Aye.
Meeting minutes for May 13th, 2013. Any comments or additions or corrections?
A move may be approved as written.
Second.
That one, Mayby?
Sure.
Commissioner Espy.
Aye.
Commissioner Guile.
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff.
Aye.
Chair Kidwell.
Aye.
Meeting minutes for June 24th, 2013. Any comments, corrections? Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Espy.
Aye.
Commissioner Guile.
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff.
Aye.
Chair Kidwell.
Aye.
And then finally, July 22nd, 2013.
Second.
Chair Es, Commissioner Espy.
Aye.
Commissioner Guile.
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby.
I'm staying.
Commissioner McGriff.
Aye.
Chair Kidwell.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, are there any public comments for items not on this evening's Seeing none, we will move on to the public hearing. We're looking at PC 13-080 and L 13-03, Adoption of South End Concept Plan, Comprehensive Plan Amendments, and L 13-04, Associated Code Amendments for Adoption of the South End Concept Plan. This is a legislative action, so we will not be reading the disclaimer. We have a staff report.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say for the record that I was a member of the South End Community Advisory Team, just so that's out there. I think my name is on the list, but I just want to declare that if there's any concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out to the members of the audience that there will be another hearing with the Planning Commission members.
Is your mic on?
Oh, yeah. Just want to point out for the audience members that there will be another Planning Commission hearing on December 9th, 2013, and staff will be recommending a continuance tonight for the public hearing. So, with that, thank you, Chair Kidwell and Planning Commissioners, and I'd like to introduce Steve Faust with Cogan Owens Cogan, they're our principals, and have led the public involvement process for the planning and development of the South End Concept Plan for the urban growth boundary. And we're going to quickly run through the work session presentation that we did last week, and then I will go into memorandum that we directed to the work that we're doing. Thank you.
Go ahead, Steve.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here tonight. The South End Concept Plan was built upon a robust public involvement process, and the foundation of the plan is really the vision and values, and I'm not going to go through it point by point. The values, in particular, we heard a lot from folks about the importance of the rural character of this area, and we'll mention throughout our presentation how we tried to stay true to that rural character while working within the structure and requirements, the regional requirements in particular. The process was led by a community advisory team, 17-member community advisory team. They represented a cross-section of interests from throughout the area and the city, county residents, city residents, youth, business interests, et cetera. Go ahead, Pete.
I'd just like to recognize our community advisory team members who are in the audience tonight. Some of them can stay and give testimony, but some of them can't. So, would you please raise your hands?
Who isn't here?
The group, the group met seven times over the course of the project to help with key decisions and guiding the public involvement process, and, yeah, tonight will be their eighth, eighth time meeting to help support the project, so we thank them for their work. The public involvement process began with what we called community conversations. We met with 17 different groups from the South End area and throughout the city, and we asked two questions, what folks like about South End today, and what changes they would like to see to make it an even better place to live in the future, and that, those two questions are what led in part to the draft vision and values. The first of four large public meetings was then held to confirm the draft vision and values. This open house and each of the other large community meetings were attended by approximately 100 people from the South End area and the city. Based on those vision and values, the second community workshop, what we call the Community Design Workshop, was, we engaged citizens in an activity to physically plan for the future of South End, and so there were 18 tables of, I'd say, four to six people, working with maps and game pieces that represented different types of housing, commercial uses, parks, trails, et cetera. This is one example of one of the maps, and I don't know if you can read that, but it says, "Stay the same," and there's dots on these maps that show the number of people who supported those. So, you know, this was a popular sentiment from folks in South End. At the same time, that was just one of the 18 maps that were created at that meeting, and the rest of the maps looked a lot more like this, a variety of uses throughout the area while trying to preserve that rural character with parks and lower-density residential uses. And we used tho, those maps, I think you'll see a direct correlation between those maps and the Concept Plan map that I'll show momentarily. At the third community meeting, residents were able to view, review, and comment on three concept alternatives that we developed based on those 18 maps. And at the final meeting on June 1st, and all the meetings were at McLaughlin Elementary, there was a preferred concept. We took, took people's comments from the third meeting, we asked them not to choose one over the other, but rather to let us know which aspects they liked best of each, and we created a hybrid concept and received final comments at that fourth community meeting. And again, about 100 people attended each of these. And here is the Concept Plan map. I will go over some of the highlights quickly, and I'll circle back to the map as needed. In terms of natural features, we tried to preserve contiguous natural spaces and wildlife corridors. There are a few road crossings where necessary for connectivity across the narrow points of some wetlands. We also looked at improving access to natural areas and views such as of the Kanema Bluffs and the river. Parks and trails, there is a network of new parks and open spaces, including a large, approximately acre park that would be sufficient for ballfields or other types of recreational opportunities as identified by the community, and civic uses are envisioned for many of those various parks and public spaces. I should mention, well, I'll point out that this is the general area of the larger park, excuse me, but I should mention that these, the location of roads, parks, and other features are approximate in nature, conceptual in nature, as this is a concept plan, so, you know, further revisions may happen as development occurs. Parks and trails, there's connections from residential uses to proposed commercial areas to regional trails, parks, and other amenities. We recommend the use of utility corridors for new trails, and several people early on were concerned about what current privately-owned open spaces being used for public use, and we wanted to reassure them that those private, private open spaces would be preserved for non-public uses. Housing, the different land uses provide a mix of single-family, multifamily, and mixed-use designations. We tried to concentrate small, smaller lots along South End Road in order to preserve more of that rural character along the fringes of the, of the neighborhood and the urban-rural interface, and there are limit, in those two areas along South End Road, there's limited neighborhood commercial uses at two nodes, at Forest Ridge Lane and Nabahoe Way. In terms of transportation, there's a complete road network that was created to promote connectivity and increase travel options by different modes, bicycle improvements, pedestrian improvements. As envisioned in the TSP, South End Road is a three-lane arterial. There are also two family-friendly roads parallel to South End Road. I'll show those quickly. Here and here, traveling north-south, and this road is proposed to be a collector. There's also a slow, narrow road along the bluffs, along Kanema Bluffs, that would provide public access and views, roundabouts to safely accommodate through traffic, and that's another feature that is in line with the TSP and is used to preserve that rural feel as opposed to signaled intersections. And again, we optimized the number of new street connections to, to help relieve the burden on South End Road. In terms of infrastructure, new water and sewer infrastructure will be constructed with roads to meet, to meet community needs, and stormwater retention ponds and swales were identified on that map along the edges of the community area at natural low, low points and in natural features. In terms of finance, I think I said this at the work session too, but we will have our finance subconsultant, Todd Chase of FCS Group, at the December 9th hearing for specific questions on finance, but I'll just go over some of the details. So, the total cost of public facilities at this time is estimated to be $72.4 million, which equates to approximately $3.69 to $5.11 per gross buildable square foot, and that is, compares favorably with other large urbanizing areas in, in the Portland region. In addition to charging developer system development charges that are already in place, we recommend that Oregon City consider new funding sources for the capital costs of, in particular, transportation, parks and trails, and stormwater systems that will have the greatest funding challenges. And some of those potential sources are supplemental parks, SDC, citywide parks utility fee, stormwater sub-basin, and SDC or reimbursement district. That's just some of the potential sources. Waters and sewer connection charges, SDC rates appear to be adequate to handle those at this time. The near-term construct, construction of upsizing and new sewer lift stations will require developer or city financing, so those are some of the major costs identified in the plan. The Public Works Department is currently, or has, reviewed SDC estimates for adequacy, is in the process of doing that, and will make a report.
Yeah.
Okay. In terms of next steps, we recommend the following, performing a value engineering exercise to refine costs for certain features like green streets, parks, and stormwater improvements. As we mentioned, considering new funding sources for parks, trails, transportation, and stormwater facilities, adopting a South End public facility plan that refines those capital cost estimates and identifies short-term public facilities and their funding sources, and revisiting and updating inter-local urban service agreements with Clackamas County and utility service providers. And Pete will now talk about Title 11 compliance.
Title 11 is the chapter of Metro Code which governs new urbanizing areas. It provides for complete community in that areas that are brought into the urban growth boundary in 2002 are subject to Title 11, and Title 11 makes sure that there is a transportation plan in place, and these are all conceptual level plans. Title 11 also requires that there be adequate numbers of housing units that are affordable to a range of incomes and that there be a diversity of housing stock. There needs to be a natural resources protection plan. There needs to be a schools plan and coordination with all the applicable service districts. There needs to be an urban growth diagram, which is what the Concept Plan diagram is, and there are various maps that implement the, the plan throughout the document. There also needs to be, as Steve pointed out, preliminary cost estimates and funding strategies and likely scenarios for funding. The conceptual public facilities plan for sanitary sewer, water, storm drainage, transportation, and parks, and police, and fire protection are all part of a concept plan as well. So, those are detailed in a report that will be coming to you on December 9th for, it'll actually be ready on December 2nd, and it will detail how the plan complies with Title 11. In general terms, the planning area will be providing approximately 2,500, 2,600 units of housing, and this is appropriate given the values and desire to maintain a rural atmosphere in the area, so we will be proposing the Metro substantial compliance of the plan, but we'll go into that in more detail on December 9th with you. To implement the plan, the city must adopt Comprehensive Plan Map with land use designations that approximate the Concept Plan land use designations, and this is the draft map that is in your packets. This is, these land use categories are broad, low-density, medium-density, residential is the, is the slightly orange color, and the bright orange color along South End Road is high-density residential. There's approximately 18 acres of high-density residential, approximately, I think about eight, 100 acres of medium-density residential, and the remainder of that is low-density residential. The mixed-use areas that are shown directly about on either side of South End Road would be neighborhood commercial areas in the future. There's approximately 12 acres of those. The other implementation of the plan is through the city zoning code, and these are the general titles of the zoning code sections that we'd be adopting. Changes too, to implement the plan, and there aren't many. There are the Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places Plan that would allow the planning document to maintain prevalence in that area. Changes to the Annexation Code in Chapter 14. Our Subdivision Code will be modified slightly, and the zoning standards would be modified to include single-family residential design standards that are specific to South End, a neighborhood commercial district that includes live-work, and standards for a minimum amount of commercial space in a neighborhood commercial zone, and the mixed-use corridor to reflect those uses that are already permitted in the, in the neighborhood commercial zone. So, this is the first time we will have actually applied the neighborhood commercial zone. It is a smaller-scale zone district that is intended to serve the adjacent residential area, not a large-scale commercial zone. The buildings in, in that zone will be smaller. Next. Also, we've looked at our code, and the majority of the existing development code, we believe, is adequate to implement the code, implement the Concept Plan with some limited revisions, which I outlined. Cleanup and citywide revisions would come later in mid to late 2014, so this gives us an opportunity to see how the code is working as far as implementing the plan. We do not anticipate that we would see any annexation proposals put forth that would be approved by the time we do any of these code changes in 2014, but, so, that's why we're okay on timing there. And I'd like to talk about the difference between a concept planning process and the processes of annexation, zoning, development review, and building construction. Before any land in this area can be proposed for annexation by private property owners, the city must adopt a concept plan. And once that concept plan is adopted, it sets the stage for further implementation of the, of the, of the public facilities plans and other things. Annexations are initiated by individual property owners and are subject to a city vote. Once the annexations are approved, zoning is applied to the property, and at that stage, the concept plan becomes a working document that guides the future zoning of that area. And once zoning is applied, you will have a development review process that could last up to one to two years, depending on whether it's site plan review or subdivision, land division. And finally, the building permitting process. This process repeats for each new property that is submitted for annexation, and the timing of this is based on property owner desires and market conditions. So, it's pretty difficult to predict how and where the concept plan would affect an individual property, but that's why we do the concept plan, is to get the best idea of where public facilities will be extended first and where it's most appropriate to locate certain types of land uses. With that, I'd like to let people know about the upcoming public hearing schedule. Planning Commission's next hearing would be December 9th, and then we have set the date for the first evidentiary city commission public hearing on January 15th, 2014, with a second city commission hearing on February 5th, 2014. Sorry, got a little crazy with the, with the numer, so that's February 5th, 2014. And additional hearings may be added if necessary. Thank you.
Did you want to go over the memo?
The next item I will discuss with you is my memorandum, which talks about what we are working on right now. Did you, anybody have any questions about the presentation?
I do have some questions about the presentation. First off, I'm sorry I wasn't here at the joint session. I had, out of the blue, out-of-state visitor show up. I have several questions. First, the development process chart, the last little chart you just had up. I just want to make it clear that it isn't, the little timeline at the bottom and the annexations and zoning are not a lineup. There won't be any, it isn't, doesn't mean that no building and construction will happen until 2040. It's, all of those things can happen anywhere along that timeline.
That's correct.
So, just, people get used to seeing that they see the timeline, oh, nothing's going to happen for 30 years.
Right.
No, that's not the case.
Thanks for the clarification.
It's the process for anything that could happen along that timeline.
And the properties in the Concept Plan area are under Clackamas County's zoning jurisdiction and are allowed to submit for building permits pursuant to the Clackamas County zoning code until Concept Plan adoption and annexation takes place, I mean. Thank you.
Okay. And I guess I'll just start at the beginning. What is a private open space?
There are several HOA-owned open spaces associated with county subdivisions in the Concept Plan area, and they are governed by covenants and restrictions that are private.
Okay, so it's not just, I have 13 acres, I have a fence around it, is the subdivision built a park for themselves, and they pay to maintain it. It's not, and that, that private space would not become part of the maintenance that we would have to do as city parks either.
That's correct.
Okay. You mentioned South End becoming a three-lane arterial. I assume that means one coming, one going, and a center-dedicated turn lane.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm saying this, all you guys, you already know this, but there's people out there that may not. The 72.4 million that you mentioned is, is not all taxpayer, right? That's just what's happening in the public right-of-way, but developers will.
Either public right-of-way or publicly dedicated land for public facilities such as storm ponds and those sorts of things.
Okay.
Yes.
But it isn't necessarily all our tax dollars. There will be some, but not all.
The majority of the costs are in the capital improvement plan, and if developers build portions of public infrastructure to serve beyond themselves, they would be qualified for system development charge credits, and otherwise, system development charges would need to be used as one tool. There may be other financing mechanisms that are recommended to cost.
But, but we 30,000 citizens don't need to try to come up with 72 million.
Correct.
It would be 50,000.
Intention is for.
10 million or whatever.
The intention is for a development to pay the majority of the costs.
Right. Okay. And then you had a fairly wide range of individual costs for buildable square feet. I mean, it's a buck fifty difference, which is fairly substantial. What's the reason for that range?
Good question. I think the, go ahead.
I was just going to say, that might be something we need to get back to you on December 9th with, when Todd Chase is here, and he could answer that.
Okay, that, that's fine.
Other than I could.
Yeah. You know, because I, if I had my druthers, I'd prefer 396.
Sure.
So, on the draft map, you might want to pull that up, because I have several.
Oh, the comply map?
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go. First, there's already developments in place. What is the current density of those developments? You have them in the low-density, but they look like pretty dense subdivisions.
Right. Now, this Comprehensive Plan map is trying to approximate the Concept Plan map. We do have low-density residential subdivisions that are shown as high, medium-density on the amendments as well to implement the Concept Map. Most of the developed county subdivisions are between 10,000 and 20,000 acre lots, uh, square-foot lots. There are some that are smaller than that. We looked at the areas that are, on the buildable lands analysis, we looked at all the county subdivisions, and that was done early in the process in the existing conditions analysis, and then through the planning process, some of those areas that were considered unbuildable based on lot size were thought to be redevelopable at a higher density based on various analysis.
Okay, so, the subdivisions we see there are.
Which ones?
All the little, yeah, there, all the, those are effectively what the city would call R10 plus.
Those would, if they annex in, they would be receiving a low-density zoning designation of R10, R8, or R6.
They're not current houses?
They are, they are current houses out there, yeah.
They're in the county.
They're in the county.
Okay, thanks.
Are those on septic tank?
Yep.
Yes.
All of them.
That's what the, that's what the open space is, is the septic field.
Yeah, right. Right.
And the, the size of those lots are what?
Well, they vary. In Finnegan's Terrace, it's around 10,000 square feet, and then over on Sunny Brook Court.
Can you point with your pointer?
So, Finnegan's Terrace is here. These are about 10,000 square-foot lots, I believe, and this is Finnegan's Terrace in the city, which is slightly denser. Over here, Sunny Brook Estates, those are 20,000 square-foot lots, and here as well. Over here, Sunny Brook Estates, those are 20,000 square-foot lots, and here as well. And then you've got some larger parcels over here. Along Impala Lane, and the larger lot subdivisions that are county subdivisions are over here on the north side of South End Road, and these are really good-sized lots. So that's Navajo Lane and off of, I forget the name of this one, I can't see it, but, yeah, they vary, but there is redevelopment potential in some of those. We're looking at those numbers now. We will probably be looking at a redevelopable area of approximately 400 acres, which would...
Okay, got it, yeah.
Yeah, net area, which would eventually yield housing units in the area of 2,500 for this entire area. And that would be spread throughout the planning area, not confined to one side or the other in a variety of housing types.
Okay, so low-density on this map is R-6?
Low-density on this map, this is a compline map, so we have three zones...
I understand that, but, but see, we're trying to translate county numbers to city numbers.
R-6 means a 6,000 square-foot lot.
Right, I understand that.
R-8's 8,000, and R-10 is 10,000.
Right.
And those are all considered low-density residential under our compline, yeah.
So what is medium-density considered?
3,500 square-foot lot to 5,000 square-foot lot.
So all those subdivisions that we see, basically twice as many in the same area as a, just rough?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And high-density?
High-density is a multifamily zone. There's approximately 15 acres of high-density shown on the concept plan map. The amount of land per unit for high-density is 2,000 square foot per unit, and that's, yeah, multifamily's considered three or more units on one parcel of land.
So that's like town homes and apartment complexes?
Town, town homes that are on the same parcel, not condos.
Like sharing walls?
Yeah, could be four-plex, could be apartment complex. They're all subject to site plan and design review in that situation.
Okay, and then how binding is this map? Like, if somebody says, "I want to," I'm in the medium-density thing, but I've got a low-density plan and I own the property?
Mm-hmm. Once adopted, the comprehensive plan map is the guiding document for future land use decisions. So what we try to do is not create potential split zones. We've tried to make sure the colors actually go to a tax lot boundary rather than, and that's been easy to do in most cases, but it wasn't able, we weren't able to do that for the lots directly budding South End Road for the neighborhood commercial zones, so there are some split designations along there. What that means for a future developer is that they may need to do a lot-line adjustment and come to some sort of consideration with a budding property owner, or hopefully not have to do a zone change or a compline amendment in order to see this plan implemented.
Okay.
To answer your question, they would come in, if they were zoned medium-density, if they had a compline designation of medium-density, they wanted to be low-density, they would come before the planning commission and the city commission requesting a comprehensive plan amendment to...
And the public would have their opportunity?
Correct. Whether it was up taking it to a higher density or to a lower density, either way, it would come before the planning commission and the city commission. That's a, that's a decision that's made by the city commission ultimately.
Okay. And then what's the donut hole?
All right. This is the area of the park, and it's shown as low-density residential.
Why isn't it just public?
The reason it's not designated as public is because we don't know when that's going to be annexed, and it's the property owner's right to...
I know, just dealing with what the map is showing.
See, continue low-density residential use at such time as it's...
So it could move over one tax lot, it could be lower, but somewhere in there is going to be a X acres park.
Somewhere. It could be here, it could be over here. It would need to be located based on proximity to the transportation system, and the likelihood that it is out here is the highest, because that's where the collector roads are proposed, that go nearby there. So that's why we put that out there. The quasi-public space here is McLaughlin Elementary School, and the metro-owned parcel adjacent to Kenema Bluffs, that are known and owned by public.
By metro, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody check.
Apologize. Not me.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Other, other questions for Pete on the presentation?
I'm still a little confused about the donut hole, what that means.
Right.
What that, that's currently owned by somebody, that spot in there.
That is...
What do you mean it can move here?
Well, everything in the concept plan is subject to change based on the timing of annexation development, so the compline is the best guiding document we have. The city parks department would need to purchase that land in the future.
It's privately owned right now.
It's privately owned, so they would act, they would need to pay fair market value for that land at a low-density residential zoning.
So is all this area not privately owned?
All of this area is...
Except for the two blue pieces.
Except for the two blue pieces.
Right, so why is that one particular lot, I'm confused, not part of the brown?
There are other proposed parks in the area that are not shown as well.
So that's proposed park, that's the idea?
Yeah, that's the one public park in this area.
Okay, that map.
Yeah. It's a, it's a regional park. There are power line easements, private parks, open-space areas that are not developable that are also shown on the concept plan map, but that is the one location that we're looking at as a public park.
I thought, well, I know that if these people alone don't get to vote for annexations as the whole city, I thought, well, maybe that, we're trying to tell us that if those people decided they didn't want to be annexed in, they could, didn't have to be, but I know that the whole area comes in, correct. If an annexation was to pass, that whole area gets annexed in.
The folks, the folks in the county get to vote. The affected property owners vote as well.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's based on, I think it's, it's based, there's a couple ways that you could figure it, based on property value, ownership, acreage, you know, deciding who votes or how big the area is, but it's not just the city voting on annexations, it's the affected property owners as well. Do they vote, Peter, or do they, do they have to sign under the application?
Application.
They sign the application, I'm sorry.
To be annexed in?
Correct. So there's majority minimums that are set up to determine what the boundary of the annexation is, and those property owners participate through...
More than 50% of the territory.
Or, and it's higher depending on whether you're using assessed value or acreage. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So you don't necessarily have to see all of this being annexed at one time?
No, there's no provision for us to do that. We expect that annexation will be piecemeal depending on proximity to public facilities in the area.
I think, I think we've had this discussion over the last, gosh, probably eight or 10 years, where we've talked about annexation, and right now, annexation is property owner-driven, being the city doesn't actively go out and look for properties to annex or engage folks for annexation. It's brought forward by private property owners who want to annex into the city. The city, we had discussions about, should we do things similar to Canby, where they identified priority lands that should be annexed, and they did an analysis of their area in the urban growth boundary, and where are the high-priority areas that they really want to see, and maybe they're industrial or employment lands, or they have really easy access to infrastructure. And we've just, the city of Oregon City, we've never taken that step. So we take a very, you know, it's, like I said, it's, someone comes in and we evaluate what they have, and you've seen it, we could have an annexation in Park Place and one by Maple Lane and one down by Beaver Creek Road. And so that's, that's the position the city's had for the last 12 years that I've been here, 13 years.
At least 20.
Right.
I just had, I actually had a question. One of the things that we talked a little bit about at the, at the CBT meetings was the whole concept about South End Road and the possibility of it being three-lane. So a few months back, we had the county come in and talk to us about their transportation systems plan, and one of the things that I asked them to get to the city was if we could see some sort of map that showed where the public right-of-way of South End Road is, because we know that it kind of meanders around, and I know that at some of the workshops we had, people were concerned, "Well, you're going to take the front of my house," or this or that, and, you know, we tried to go, we tried at the cat to explain that there is a public right-of-way, and a lot of times what people think is part of their front yard might actually be part of the public right-of-way, it's just not built to that standard.
I see.
So is there a way that we could, for the next hearing, we could get, or at least in our packets, just so we can see what the, you know, the current cross-section of South End is versus what, you know, would be nice for it to be. I say nice for it to be in the future, because I don't know if there's enough room everywhere, and I think John told us that it's a 60-foot right-of-way, but I can't find my notes on that.
Yes, we can do that.
And it doesn't have to be anything real, you know, just...
Right.
Probably just give you a corridor section and an average right-of-way width along that section.
I mean, I know it isn't built out to what it's, and it meanders. I know that for a fact, having...
Driven it. Yep.
Driven it and walked part of it.
Okay, well, I'm going to briefly go through my memorandum that addresses what we're doing right now. So, as I said, we are analyzing the comprehensive plan designations on this current draft to assure that the plan provides the needed amount of housing. We need to meet both state and metro housing requirements. So for the 2002 expansion area, which is the area that is southernmost within this concept plan, the average residential density per net acre of developable land is required to be 10 units per acre per metro requirements, and the state housing, metropolitan housing rule applies elsewhere throughout the cities that we need to show a net density of eight units per acre. The plan that we're putting forward proposes less than that. We are showing a net residential density of approximately eight dwelling units per acre, which meets state requirements but does not fully comply with Metro Title 11. And the reason for that is, there are several. And the justification for this is what we will be providing to you on December 2nd. We've listened to the community, and the values envisioned for this area is to preserve as much as possible the rural character of the area and the neighborhood feel, and that one factor in itself is significant justification from the city's perspective for a lower density than 10 units per acre throughout the planning area. Additionally, as much as we have done thorough analysis of the transportation system plan for this area, and the concept plan shows that the capacity of South End Road will handle the build-out, there are existing failing intersections outside the planning area that will be further impacted by the transportation impacts associated with development here, and those have been documented in detail in the transportation analysis that was done both with the transportation system plan and with the concept plan. And for that additional reason, we feel that we substantially comply with Title 11 with the approximately 2,500 units of housing that we're proposing, rather than the 2,800 units of housing that is required if you apply a strict standard of 10 units per acre under metro code. That...
I've got one question.
Yes.
Would there be any other places in the city where you would increase density to make up for those deficits in this plan? Because I think it makes sense that, you know, this area is rural in character and the transportation system doesn't serve, you know, the projected densities that metro may want unless you do something much different out there.
Correct.
So...
The concept plan areas that we've adopted already include the Park Place concept plan area, which would provide for 1,400 units of additional housing, and the Beaver Creek Road concept plan, which now envisions a lot more housing than was originally anticipated when the UGB was expanded to bring that area in for industrial use. So it's a significant amount of housing in the Beaver Creek Road concept plan area, but it is subject to final adoption, because we have not gone through the process of zoning, developing zoning for that property out there. So it is a potential option. We have some comments from the metro, sorry, the State Department of Land Conservation Housing Specialists that talk about how well our plan complies with needed housing. That means housing that is affordable to people within a certain range of the area median income. We feel that the plan does do this. We provide specific numbers for that in the staff report on December 2nd. And DLCD is also suggesting that the city look at our cost and funding sources and compare them with what they call the lodestone of difficult public facilities financing and UGB expansion areas, which is North Bethany in Washington County, and determine whether we have a real funding problem that the city needs to address and how to address that. So we're looking at that with Todd Chase, and we'll provide further background for you on December 2nd. The zoning code that we have proposed is sufficient for us to adopt the plan. We do have some additional recommendations from the consultants that I wanted to address, not tonight, but in more detail, with respect to whether our code allows for clustering of single-family development to take the burden off of environmentally sensitive areas. We do have cottage housing provisions and onsite density transfer provisions for protection of natural resources and trees, and flexible setbacks for those areas. So in that sense, we do have clustering provisions in our existing zoning code. We also are going to look at our current annexation and zoning correlation charts in Chapter 1768. This is the code that allows a default designation of zoning to apply to an annexed property, and that is the lowest, usually, that applies the lowest designation zoning for an annexed property within a certain land designation. What we've done in the last few years is to detach the annexation process from the zoning request process to provide better analysis for the zoning recommendations that are coming forward, and that may be a recommendation that we bring before you in mid-2014, because it affects the entire city, not just the concept plan area. Finally, our existing conditions report does, will include a discussion of soil types, and the city engineer has given us detailed comments about the soil types in this area with respect to the potential for use of low-impact development techniques, based on whether the soil can actually drain and handle that additional percolation, but we'll be doing that as part of that review. City engineer and Public Works has compiled a set of comments, which are attached to your plan. I understand that those were not able to be printed out when you printed them, so I apologize for that, but they are available for review, and they will include a set of green street and low-impact development practice assumptions and recommendations for future Steve went over in detail the parks, the funding and financing gaps, but we would like to provide for you further discussion on how we intend to pay for park facilities, including the possible acquisition of land underneath utility corridors and power line easements, and we will talk about the additional amendments to the water and sewer studies and plan updates as well in more detail, since those public facilities plans provide even more detail than the concept plan does. Concept plan essentially provides a preliminary basis for future, more detailed engineering studies. As part of our findings, we will also include findings for compliance with the Transportation Planning Rule and the Metro Regional Transportation Plan, and these will supplement the work that was done with the recent adoption of the city's transportation system plan in August 2013. That dovetailed with this planning process and made the same growth assumptions for the South End concept plan area that the TSP does. And we'll also be including some additional findings for TPR compliance for the intersection of Oregon 99 within the, within the city limit and the area along South End Road intersection with 99 outside the city limit toward Canby. Finally, we have some cleanup map resolution, graphics labeling, and overall graphic quality that was not available to be included on the current draft because of the sheer size of the document. That final draft will correct this. We'll be adding sidebar captions where it's been missing. We have some comments from the city attorney on the plan that we'll be including. We have some comments from the city attorney on the plan that we'll be including. We'll be updating our stormwater figures and adjusting the figure numbers. We'll be including a more detailed discussion of the fire protection for the area based on comments we've received from the Clackamas Fire District. We'll be adding a concept plan diagram legend, clearer city limits and urban growth boundary. And some of the graphics, one of the graphics was mirrored in that it was reversed, so you couldn't read it, so we'll fix that. Thank you, and we look forward to providing our findings to you on December 9th.
If I could just add one more thing, and Pete talked a little bit about, DKS was our transportation engineering firm who did the traffic impact study and looked at the, they also did our transportation system plan update, which preceded this by a couple of months, so it was actually very good timing. In your, in the information that we've provided you, there's an October 17, 2013 analysis done by DKS, and on page eight of that, it identifies the vehicle operations during the PMP period that are impacted by the South End Concept Plan. And so, there's a couple things, you know, transportation planning, you know, we're looking out to 2035. You know, one of the first things is the base assumption, which is how much growth is gonna happen? And you put a number on that, so you can just imagine, there's a big difference between you assume 2% for 20 years or you assume 1.5% in terms of the, just the vehicle trips that become the base. And so what we're seeing is that as Metro is refining these transportation models, the numbers are actually coming in lower. So we used actually very conservative in what are probably gonna be higher numbers in the transportation analysis that we did. They're coming out with a refined model, a beta model, and what we're seeing is that our assumptions have been high in our transportation analysis, which is, over the long term, a benefit as long as those trends hold true. But more importantly, on page eight of the 26-page document created by DKS, and they're gonna provide additional findings that we're gonna bring back to you at our next meeting, but they looked at the intersections of McLaughlin and South Second, McLaughlin and South End, South End Road, South Second, South End Warner Parrot, South End Lafayette, South End Butel, Warner Parrot, Central Point, Warner Parrot Lynn, Leland. So we looked at several intersections there, and there's two criteria that we look at. V over C, volume over capacity, and it needs to be .999 or less, and then a level of service, which is, measures delay. It's an A through F grading scale. And, for example, when you start to look at South End Road, Warner Parrot, under the 2035 TSP, the volume of capacity, remember, 1 is full congestion, is at .6, and it operates at a level of service A. You add in the trips from the South End Concept Plan, the V over C goes from .61 to .66, so a .05 increase, but you maintain that level of service A. So that intersection's gonna function and meet the level of service standards. You look at South Second and South End under the TSP, so the base condition, we didn't include South End in that, it operates at .81, level of service E. So it meets the V over C and it meets the level of service. F is failure, much like grade school. And you add in the concept plan, all of a sudden the V over C exceeds 1. It goes to 1.02, level of service goes to F. So then, we identify what's the fix. Is there a way to fix that? And the fix is you install a traffic signal. That drops the V over C to .56 and the level of service to A. So what this analysis has done is identified those intersections that are impacted. And the ones that fail, McLaughlin, South End Road, South End Road, South Second, the one I just described to you, Warner Parrot Road, Central Point. And so we have fixes for that that bring those to within acceptable V over Cs as well as acceptable level of service standards, even with the full build-out of this. And another thing to remember is, when you look at a single-family house, and I'm just gonna use round numbers, let's just say, you know, the IT manual says it creates 10 trips per day, so that house is responsible for 10, you have 2,500 units, that's 25,000 trips mathematically. But 25,000 trips don't happen at the same time during the same hour of the commute. So, for example, everyone in here knows us who drove or car-pooled, those are all a trip from your house here and a trip back to your home. But right now, there's more capacity in our roadways than we'll ever use up. So we focus on where our rush is, and that's either the AM peak hour, so when folks are driving to work, driving to school, or the PM peak hour, folks are coming home. And so, you know, just kind of, some of you are aware of this, you've dealt with transportation engineering and the methodology behind it, but when we hear 2,500 units in this area and we hear 10 trips per unit and 25,000 trips, you've gotta remember, all those aren't happening at the same time, and that those are dispersed throughout that period. And so we focus in on how much do we estimate will happen during that AM and PM peak, and then what will that do to the intersections, and then we focus on what are the fixes to address those. So just a little bit of clarification, 'cause, you know, there are, it's a bit, you know, it's a 2035 assumption, and these will be refined, that's why we bring the transportation system plan back, which looks at the whole city, and we do these analyses every five to 10 years so that we can see, okay, here was the assumption we made, where are we at? Did we miss it high? Did we miss it low? Are we right on track? Are different intersections being impacted in different ways than we assumed? Is there more growth happening outside of the city limits that are coming through, whether it be Beaver Creek, 99E, South End, any of those roads that serve our outer communities? And so, it's a start. It gets us, based on our best professional judgments of what impacts will be, are shown in this transportation system plan update, as well as the transportation assumptions that are in the information that's been provided to you. Just wanted to provide a little clarification on the transportation component of this.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for either Peter or Tony?
No.
Okay. Are we ready to move to public testimony?
Certainly.
Do we have a list?
I do. First, I have Mr. Bob LaSalle.
Tony, are you gonna keep...
I have, let me see if I can get this to turn on up here. Yes?
And Chair Kidwell, this is Carrie Richter for the record. I'd like for the commission to make a public statement about how long, if you're gonna set time limits on testimony, what those time limits are gonna be? And maybe Tony could inform that by letting us know how many people you've got on the list.
Usually, we do three minutes for general public, five minutes for a recognized neighborhood association. One, two, three...
That's fine if that's how you wanna do it. I just wanted to make a formal statement about that.
Is everybody good with this?
I'm good with that.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine folks have signed up so far, but if more would like to speak, we certainly can accommodate them.
So just as a clarification, if you're representing yourself as an individual, you'll have three minutes, and if you're representing a neighborhood association that's recognized, you'll have five minutes.
And Tony, where's the timer for them?
We're gonna go off the screen up here.
Nothing out there from the city, okay?
We just have, we have an ejection seat if you go past the timer.
I won't even get close to three minutes.
Oh, just, yeah, just don't tease everything.
We've heard that story before.
We're honored to speak tonight. My name is Bob LaSalle, I'm a citizen of Oregon City, and I was on the CAT representing the Transportation Advisory Committee. And most of my interest, of course, was focused on transportation issues. Tony just clarified some information about impact outside of the South End Concept Plan, which I think are workable. But I've been impressed with the open houses that they had. I was talking with people at the first meeting that were quite worried about them being taken over by the city and wanted to maintain their rural feeling of their neighborhoods. And with the open houses and the information that was offered, I had some of those same people come back to me with an attitude that, well, yeah, this will probably work okay. We may not agree with all of the concept, but it's a workable plan. So they really did a good job of outreach into the community. So I'd recommend that the plan be adopted.
Bob, just because, for everybody else, there's people watching on television, on cable, as well as out in the audience, we tend to use a lot of abbreviations when you've been on those committees, can you tell people what CAT meant?
No.
Okay.
Citizens Advisory Team.
Okay.
I can't keep up with them myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Ginger Redlinger? And just for the record, we did receive a letter, it was dated November 25, 2000, from Mr. Robert Wendling, and we will enter that into the record as Exhibit Number 1, and we will make sure that that's in your packet and forwarded to you to read.
Are there two? I have one. There's two? Two letters?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ginger Redlinger. I was the principal at John McLaughlin Elementary and was very impressed by the community's efforts and the commission's plan. Pete and Steve did a wonderful job of making everyone feel welcome and a part of the process. It was very open, it was very iterative. Every time someone made a suggestion, we saw it at the next meeting. It was a very fair process. Everyone had the opportunity to speak multiple times, shared their opinions. It was a very informative process, and I think one that will serve the community well in the future. I was glad to be part of it, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to participate. So thank you.
If I may, I'd like to thank you for making your facility available to the city multiple times. So thank you very much for that.
Sure. Good community is definitely a partnership, so keep at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rachel Thompson?
Thanks for having me. I wrote mine, so, in the form of a letter, so I'm just gonna read it if that's okay. Okay, I said, "Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Rachel Thompson, I'm a resident of the South End area, as well as a member of the South End Concept Plan Community Advisory Team, representing the interests of the county at large. I am speaking on behalf of myself and Andrea Schmierbach as well. Andrea is also a resident of the Concept Area and a member of the Community Advisory Team, representing the interests of local businesses. Andrea and I currently reside in the Concept Area, but this area is especially significant to us as we also grew up here, on Butel Road. We chose to buy our homes and continue to live in this area primarily for its rural charm. Thus, going into this project, neither of us found the idea of development desirable. After going through the concept planning process, we continue to feel the same. However, I recognize that today I'm here to speak on the process itself and how our team, with input from the community, help shape what is the proposed concept plan. Andrea and I both feel strongly that despite the opposition by many of the residents in the area, including ourselves, our concerns, comments, and ideas were heard and taken into great consideration. Once we understood and accepted that this concept plan must be completed, we encouraged others in the community workshops to embrace the idea of change so that at the very least we could have an impact on the vision for the area. We felt comfortable and encouraged to raise concerns, ask questions, make objections, or to offer alternatives. We believe that the planners went above and beyond, hosting numerous community events in addition to the website, mailers, and emails, to ensure that residents were given ample opportunity to offer input and participate in the process. In the end, I truly believe that the plan meets the requirements we were charged with, while representing the vision and values of the residents to the best of their ability. We both really enjoyed the experience of being a part of this team, but more importantly, of being a voice for ourselves and that of our neighbors. This has been a very positive experience. However, if there is one piece of advice that it could offer for future planning projects, it would be to better define the process and where we are in that process early on, as well as clearly expressing the voluntary aspect of annexation. Most of us are not educated in the planning process, so the great unknown can be quite frightening, but with little more clarity, I think that some of the anxiety associated with the planning and developing of an occupied area can at the very least be reduced. In closing, I ask that you accept this proposed plan with the confidence that this was created fairly and with the utmost respect for the residents of this Concept Area. Thank you for your time."
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Mr. Paul Heimowitz?
My name is Paul Heimowitz. I live on Butel Road in the South End Road Study Area, and I'm one of the members of the Community Advisory Team representing county at-large residents. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to have played that role. I think the concept plan under consideration tonight is the best compromise amidst the challenge of a lot of competing community desires. During one of our first meetings, I think Steve referred to this, when we were asked how we had envisioned the future of the South End Road area, a lot of us replied not to change. And I personally wish for a place where future residents, and even my own teenage daughters, if they chose to stay in the area, would still enjoy open rural landscapes and still regularly hear owls and coyotes like we do now, and not necessarily the sound of their neighbors' television sets instead. But at the same time, I think we gained an appreciation of this during the process, the reality is, is that the metro area is growing, our area is now inside the urban growth boundary, and concentrating that growth within the urban growth boundary is what helps Oregon preserve open spaces better than a lot of other states have been able to do. So given that, the city exceeded my expectations with its efforts to engage the community envisioning how to best balance growth and Metro's requirements while honoring the values of those of us who moved to South End Road in search of a more rural landscape. And although I think there are a lot of different ways we could have sliced that balance, the current concept plan represents a fair balance between the diversity of viewpoints that we heard, and the overall process the Community Advisory Team engaged in, I thought, was very open and also very welcoming. So in addition to supporting adoption of the concept plan and the associated code improvements, many of which I think are a welcome progressive approach to future development, I guess I also would leave commission with the challenge that after, assuming this plan is adopted, we not stop there, but we really look at trying to take what may be considered a patchwork of how we approach development and integration of natural environment to the city into a more pervasive cohesive network. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sheila Decker?
Hi, my name's Sheila Decker, and I am actually a member of the Kenema Neighborhood. My concerns have only been addressed extremely peripherally tonight, mostly by Tony. He spoke about intersections and how you could solve the problems of intersections and travel on the road. What has not been addressed at all, as far as I can tell, is the state of the road between Second Avenue and the top of the bluff, specifically between Fifth Avenue, which is the only feeder road from the Kenema Neighborhood, and the top of the bluff. It's failing. It's been failing for years. On that section of road between Fifth Avenue and the top of the bluff are seven areas where the roadbed is slumping. Four of those are small, one is medium-sized, two are quite large. The one just past the Coffee Creek Waterfall, just to the naked eye, has eroded considerably in the last year and a half. And it's large enough to where if it fails, it will take out half the road to the center line or beyond. The other extremely bad area is just past the Fifth Avenue exit from Kenema. There have been a number of attempted fixes to that road, that section of the road over the year, the last one was several years ago. Bedrock was drilled into with rebar and bolts, and then gravel was put down and chain-linked, and then the road was repacked, regraded, and repaved, and within months, it was slumping. If you drive over it tomorrow, you would look at it and think nothing had ever been done. And it doesn't just affect South End Road, it affects Fifth Avenue. Anybody driving down into Kenema is going to go on an undulating, bumping road almost up to where the houses start. What that tells me without any sort of... What that tells me, without any sort of degree in science or engineering, is that that's a slide area. That's a continual slow slide area. And no fixes, none of the fixes that have been done by the city have worked. So, it isn't the intersections, you know, that they're the only problem, it's that whole section of road, it can't be widened, you would have to blast into bedrock, you would have to take out existing houses on one side of the road, and blast into bedrock to widen the road, or to fix the road. And I don't see that happening. You know, as it stands now, it's a hazard, it's a hazard for people who drive on the road now, as far as I'm concerned. Not to mention the fact that if it fails because of increased car traffic on the road, you cut off one of the only two exits from Canema. You can enter on Hedges, or Jerome, or Miller, but you can only exit on Fifth. And it will impact us as far as response time for fire, and for ambulances. We have had, up in the Canema bluff area, we've had fires on the bluff, we recently had a house fire. Imagine if they had to go, they couldn't use South End Road, they'd have to go, you know, if it came from the South End Fire Station, they'd have to go around to Lynn, down through Oregon City, down 99 to Canema, you know, or what, go down South End Road all the way down to 99, and then go up 99?
Can you conclude your comments?
Well, my comments, yeah, my comments are simply that there needs to be consideration of more than, you know, turning South End Road to a three-lane arterial, because it doesn't affect my section at all. And it's already a road that's in trouble, and if you don't address it, and you don't address it now before any of the
Volume.
The volume changes, and the construction is done, you're going to make a bad problem exponentially worse. So, I would thank you for your consideration, and it's just something you guys need to consider, because it's common sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Eric and Holly McCarty, they signed up together, so if they'd like to come up together, it'd be great.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Eric McCarty, this is my wife Holly. We were not part of the planning team, in fact, we really have been uninformed of this process until just recently, when we saw the orange card, that's really what got our attention, when it said that our property may be affected by some decisions. We did see some earlier mailings that there were discussions and planning, but we really didn't know what kind of an impact that might have, and of course, in the course of living our lives, things get busy, and we don't know what we should be paying close attention to, and what we shouldn't. In short, we have been living in this area, we're both long-flung residents of Oregon City and the surrounding area. We live on Sunny Ridge Court, we bought the property back in 2000, so we've been there for 13 years. When we moved out to this area, the intention of coming out here was to live in a semi-rural setting, that's still close enough to the city that we can get access to the services that we want, but in the end, we come back home, we have a quiet, somewhat natural space to live in. We are bordered, obviously, by more heavily developed areas, within, you know, no more than two blocks of our home, we can get to some more highly developed areas. Our piece of property is .51 acres. We do feel that what we've seen of the concept plan so far would negatively impact the very thing that we moved into this area for, and that was for the natural space. A mention was made earlier about the wildlife in the area, we do experience the wildlife on a daily basis, we have deer in our yard on almost a daily basis, and we're pretty deep in towards South End Road, so those deer are transversing a pretty large area to get to where we are. Last year, we had wild turkeys, we've had quail, grouse, raccoon, I mean, there's quite a few different animals that live in this area, and that's part of the charm of the space. Now, I understand that as they try to plan, they look to add green spaces, parks, I don't see that as maintaining the actual feel of the space. There are plenty of city parks we can go to, within a very short drive of our home. We never felt like we were lacking a need for additional city parks in our area. When we moved into this space, we intentionally moved out of the boundaries of Oregon City, into unincorporated Clackamas County, and not with the hope that someday Oregon City would find us and welcome us back in. It keeps our property taxes low, because one thing it would do, if anyone decides to propose annexation, is to increase our property taxes, which negatively affects us. Also, the opportunity that we would have to join up with the septic system. I think it was mentioned last, in the last meeting, that if a septic line is run down South End Road, the branches off of that line would be covered only up to the first 300 feet. After that, it's our understanding that it would be borne by the cost of the people who live in that area, to bring the lines to their homes, excuse me, and that's a cost that we're not prepared to bear. We know some folks who've had to do that in other areas, and it was an extremely painful hit to them. Anyway, in short, we do not support the plan, we are not in favor of it, we do appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight, and we look forward to coming back later if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Tony and Pete, before we go to the next person, could you point out where that is?
Yeah.
I just, I don't know all the street.
Sure, I think it's also important to notice that, under Department of Environmental Quality regulations, if a septic field, so, you know, within Oregon City's urban growth boundary are several subdivisions that were applied under, approved under Clackamas County, so you have an urbanization that's happened adjacent to city limits, and a majority of those are on septic fields. Department of Environmental Quality requires that if a septic field fails, and you're within 300 feet of city services, for health and safety, you need to hook up to the sanitary sewer line, and that cost is borne by the property owner that's impacted. You know, it just, depending on when the subdivision was built, the quality of the septic tank that was built, if you have aluminum, steel, typically you're going to see those begin to rust out, if you have concrete, you know, that could last quite a long time, much longer standard length of life than you'd see on steel. And the upkeep, it just depends on how well those were up kept. But that's not, that's a health and safety issue, when you start to have these failing septics on these smaller lots adjacent to city services. So, just a little bit of clarification there on how a failing septic on a lot in the county within 300 feet of existing sanitary sewer in the city occurs.
Right, and I think DEQ can also come in and identify a large area where there are mass septic failures, and require the city to provide sewer in those locations.
Which has happened to us up in Park Place.
Right.
Two, right.
Yep.
And the other side of it, too, is a lot of times when a developer, or the city's driving a new line in, it's not at all uncommon to talk with the people in that area, and kind of create a bulk rate, let's jump on and everybody attach at once, because you only have to, you know, dig the trench once, instead of all the taps, so. It is an expense, I don't deny that at all, but there are some opportunities in the next 35 years to mitigate some of that expense.
I think it's also probably worth just reminding everybody that, as Pete indicated, the whole annexation process is voluntary, it's not something that the city determines that has to happen until the residents decide that they want to be a part of that. So, I know we've had a number of annexation issues come before the city that have failed, they've been voted down, because the residents of that area were not interested in joining into the city at that time. So, it's not something the city is necessarily advocating that you be annexed into the city, this is just a framework or concept plan of what development would look like if people decided to join into the city.
Just to clarify what you just said, that wasn't just the residents in that particular area, because the whole Oregon City gets to vote on those annexations, correct?
Right, but the people in that area have to bring the application to the city.
And it's the same majority, right, and so if you have 10 lots, if six of them want to annex, and the other four don't, then it's a policy decision of the Planning Commission and City Commission whether to include those four that don't, but technically, the boundary includes a majority petitioning to annex.
Just like you can see on the map, right here, where we, where the city zigged around a group of homeowners who didn't want to be part of it.
Is that all the questions on that one? Mr. Paul Edgar?
How many pages is that speech, Paul?
I sent you guys copies of this stuff already.
Paul, are you speaking as an individual?
I'm speaking as the Land Use Chair of the Citizens Involvement Council. Enclosed, what I provided to you is a letter that I sent off, and an email to Ethan Seltzer and Christopher Monsur.
Could you hold on, because I've got multiple pieces of paper, so did you hand out two pieces of paper?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Stapled in a single sheet.
Okay. That's just a little confusing there, I didn't know if I was trying to figure out why I only had one piece of paper.
Go ahead.
Okay, this email was to, I tried to describe to these professors at Portland State, that I've known from classes at Portland State, that I'm the Land Use Chair of the Citizens Involvement Council, and the South End Road Concept Plan was going to be happening. We've been dialoguing it, and we believe that the density levels are far too high for the available transportation capacity that serves this area, much as was said earlier about South End Road. What we have on South, on top of that, we don't have any TriMet buses coming into this area, and I would like to note that a large bus is weight restricted from even going up South End Road in the future. We, if, in round numbers, if we have 2,500 new dwelling units, and each of these dwelling units are, on average, creating 10 incidents of travel, this is like the door opens 10 times a day, somebody's going in, somebody's going out, where are they going? And if I were to take a big jar of marbles, I'm going to have, as a result of this, 25,000 of these marbles being dribbled out all day long, but they come like a fire hose. In the AM peak, the PM peak, we have these two major intersections that are going to, actually, there's three that are going to be affected. South End Road and Warner Parrot. That intersection right now has about 10,500 trips going through it a day. South End Road has about, between 9,000 to 10,000 trips on it a day, right now. If we start taking 30 to 35% of all of the trips of the day, and put them, they will go through that intersection of Warner Parrot and South End Road every day in an AM peak period. That drives that intersection to level of Service F at total failure. There's no way you can get around it. Those trips then, 50% of the trips that are heading into town, are jobs, because there's no jobs available, these people that move in and buy these houses don't have jobs in Oregon City, most of them are coming from someplace else, and it's north Portland and that area. So, these people will be flowing down, and that's one of the reasons why I included this additional analysis of the direction, and the time, and the distance, of saying, if you're going to leave from Butel, and I use this example of Butel and South End Road, and I try to give you distances, and so, how does a crow fly? The crow flies the shortest, fastest, direct route, that's coming down South End Road. So, now we have Second Street and High, and then we flow over to the intersection of Second and Highway 99. These intersections, with this type of incidents of travel, generated out through the years, are not correctable. That's the key point. The key point is, we could go up there, I don't, you know, Tony may have his opinion, but honestly, you can't get that many, we got 25,000 possible trips being generated by 2,500 new dwelling units, and there is no way that I can get those trips in an AM period, or a PM period, through the existing intersections, and if I flow east, I'm now at Lynn and Warner Parrot, Lynn, Warner Milne. I see a significant amount of those people coming through there, trying to turn to the right, heading east, and when I do that, now I'm going to blow those intersections out. So, this is just not simple, and I think that you guys need to take a look at it, because this impacts our whole city in a major way. This is beyond the scope of the capacity of our road network that we have. It's just beyond the scope of it. And some of these areas, South End Road, you heard it, it's falling down, it's breaking off, and we know it is, and we've got a creek there, and we've got a problem, and I would only hope, you can read through this, you can take a look at the trip counts, honest statements, but I believe that it impacts our whole city in a very negative way.
I do have a quick question for you, Paul. The stapled letter that you submitted, that's a letter from you to
To the professors. I asked them to validate my logic.
That's fine. Do you have a response from them yet?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
When I get one, I will provide it to you.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to mention that the Transportation Consultant, we've invited them to come and answer questions at the December 9th hearing, DKS Associates, they have done trip generation modeling, and trip distribution analysis in the plan, and they've also, will be providing a discussion of their model, and what that modeling did to the peak hour trip distribution based on the most recent model that they're using for Metro.
We'd like to see that independently, too, in advance, so that we, and I had asked for that, so that we could be prepared to talk to it at the next meeting.
Would you, sir, Tony?
Thank you.
So, I guess I would just point out that the DKS memorandum dated October 17th is part of the packet, it's Appendix C of the information that's been online since this was publicly noticed, and that, hopefully, you get the chance to read through that a little bit more, you can bring your questions to DKS. These aren't my opinions in terms of trip generation and counts, this is based off the ITE manual, and adopted standards by both the city, the state, and the region in terms of how trip generation is calculated.
Tony, is it?
And once again, I would point out that unless every car, every household out here had 10 cars, you're not going to have 25,000 trips on the road at the same time.
Is that Appendix in our packet?
I'm sorry?
Is that Appendix in our?
It is. Tony? It is under all SECP, all South End Concept Pan appendices.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then it's about a page 150 or so in that appendix.
Thank you.
And the discussion with respect to the modeling will be in a new exhibit for your December 2nd packet, so.
And so, I think really, and this goes back to what I was discussing earlier, on page, roughly starting on page 8, is where we look at Table 3, the 2035 Motor Vehicle Operations, and we look at the TSP without the South End Concept Plan, and then with the Concept Plan, and what the improvements are that would address the level of service in the V-OS standards that we need to meet.
Tony, I'm curious, and maybe Pete's the one to answer, has there been an outreach to TriMet about potential service to South End?
Yeah, we discussed transit in the Concept Plan area, in the Transportation section of the plan, and they have been on our Technical Advisory Team, and provided all of the draft documents that we've had throughout the process. Their service to the area will be dependent on future finance, financing for the district, but we are within the TriMet district in the the district, but we are within the TriMet district in the city limit part of the city. We're also exploring possibilities that can be area transportation, could provide interim service to the area until such time as TriMet decides to serve the area as well. So that's discussed in detail in the plan.
What determines TriMet's need, and I know in Park Place area, we only have two buses a day out that whole area of Polkam.
Well, regardless of their financing situation and difficulties, they tend to want to go where the housing units are and where the demand is. So, you know, to that extent, urban growth boundary areas with adopted plans are some of the higher priorities for their service plans and that sort of thing. So I don't know beyond that.
Good start, yes.
Okay. Before I call up the next person, the letter from Mr. Edgar to Mr. Seltzer at PSU will be entered into Exhibit 2, and then the second document from Mr. Edgar with the estimated miles for certain routes will be entered as Exhibit 3.
Thank you.
Next, I'll call up Zeb Yaklich.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Zeb Yaklich. I'm a part of the Citizens Advisory Team, a county member at large. I originally got involved with this process because I have a family here, we moved here about seven years ago. One of, two of my children are in grade school currently, and my third is in high school here. The reasoning for getting involved with this is because there were errors that we saw with the community that we moved into, and we wanted to be a part of something that would help future families that move to this area have a place that really is well thought out conceptually and going even further than that, that included all different segments of our community. One of those being the senior community as well, looking at South End and listening to the people who have lived there for years and making sure that there's spaces for them as this is adopted. What I'd like to really mention with this process is that through it, the community was very well informed. The effort was really made to make sure that there was notices given to everyone, there were mailings provided, websites with very engaging and interactive features that helped to actually show what this may look like, as well as provide them with a way to actually online provide feedback and ideas on what they would like to see as the community grows. In addition, there was many publications that provided a lot of information on this overall process. The community forums that were created had great turnout, were very informative, and again, the team that put this together created very interactive methods to support how the land could be used and developed over the years. Each of these were very well attended events with oftentimes 100-plus people at each one of those events. Very diverse groups were represented throughout this community, starting with myself, which was a person with a young family, all the way to people who were entering retirement. Really, what I would like to say is that I believe that this was well thought out and that it was very interactive for the community, and there was a lot of participation with many different groups. There's definitely not going to be any one solution for this, and there will always be people that disagree on how the land can be used, but I believe the forum was there for people to discuss this. So with that being said, it would be my recommendation that this is adopted as a Concept Plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tom O'Brien.
Yes, Commissioner, pardon me, Commissioners, I'd like to request five minutes and speak on behalf of the Hazel Grove Westling Farms Neighborhood Association. Although it's very difficult for a person in my position to be able to represent over 800 homeowners of diverse opinions, I'm simply going to attempt to share with you a few of the things that have come about through the process. And I do have a formal statement, which I was going to read, and I've decided not to, but I will provide it to you for the record. I think it's better that, since others have addressed some of the issues, that I try to avoid those and just let the record speak for itself. I'd like to begin by complimenting Steve Faust, Kristen Green, Lawrence Quamar, and the entire Cogan Owens and Cogan team, as well as our own Pete Walter. They've all done their very best under what I would consider difficult situations. They had to face some hostile people from the very get-go, and I thought they did an exceptionally good job of bringing unity to something that was a very controversial subject area. One of the things that has not been, to my understanding, adequately covered, and in fact, some of the things within the plan, I would suggest, before they bring it back to you in December, that they update and change a few little things that I feel need to be tweaked. One of those is in the area of transportation. Page 7 on the third paragraph, while transit service is not currently provided in the study area, it is provided in Oregon City by TriMet. As a side note, when I moved to the area a number of years ago, we had bus transportation going up and down the South End Road corridor. At the time that they added the TriMet light rail system to Clackamas Town Center, they took that away. I had purchased there intentionally, knowing that at some point in my life, if I wished to remain in my home, I would possibly want to use that bus service, and it was within walking distance. Now, the closest bus service to my home, and I live outside the area, just a little bit closer to the city than most, if you look at the blue area outlined by McLaughlin Grade School, I live just on the outside of that. My closest bus is two miles from my home, and I am not about to walk two miles in Oregon weather to catch a bus, stand around and wait for it, and then have to transfer it to Transit Center to catch another bus, et cetera. And I don't think most of the people in the Concept Plan area are willing to do that. It goes on to say in this Paragraph 3 that Oregon City is served by TriMet, and Americans with disability act paratransit service is also available. That is erroneous. When they removed the route from South End Road, we have had one particular resident in the area repeatedly come to our Neighborhood Association meetings, as well as to another meeting down at the Riverside Hotel where David Fraser was talking, and address the fact that she has an invalid son who used to be able to take the paratransit to his job, and when TriMet pulled it, they pulled that as well. He is no longer able to work. So that I would like to see corrected in the proposal. It's a little misleading here, saying that we have Oregon City trolley as well. To the best of my knowledge, two of the trolleys have been eliminated, and the third one is on its way to being eliminated. So I think for purposes of a document that's going out into the future, even though it might be true now that there's some seasonal trolley service, I don't think it's going to be with us much longer. Same page, on page 7 up above in Paragraph 2, it states, "South End Road and Salmonberry Drive are generally the only routes that provide dedicated bicycle and pedestrian access in and out of the plan area." Well, I live very close to Salmonberry Drive. Two-thirds of the length of Salmonberry Drive is outside of the city limits. It is not being maintained very adequately by the county. And in fact, the area closest on Salmonberry Drive to South End Road, you have a large tree root lifting half of the roadway surface, approximately four inches above the rest of the roadway. There are no sidewalks on Salmonberry. There are no dedicated bike paths on Salmonberry. So I think that's a correction that we perhaps want to make on this document. I tried to take and look at the numbers proposed, and one of the concerns that I have that I address is, you have an issue coming before you in your next meeting, I believe, where three parcels in the vicinity of Central Point Road and White Lane are being asked to reduce the zoning from R10 to R6. Even though all three of those parcels are almost completely surrounded by R10s currently, the builder involved would like you to approve an R6. When I look at the South End Concept Plan area, that is the major concern that the residents of the area have. How do you maintain a rural appearance or feel to an area when you have R6 housing? When I run the numbers and I look at the areas which already have R10 properties on them, particularly in the low-density areas shown in the draft map, you have quite a few of those spaces already accounted for with R10, which, if the entire space that is shown here as low-density were constructed out according to the table on page 16, approximately 40 percent of those would have to be R6, and 60 percent would have to be R8. But because there's a significant level already of R10s and larger in that low-density area, I suspect strongly that the remaining area that will be developed is going to come before you to be changed to an R6. And I find it very difficult, as do others, to imagine that that maintains a rural characteristic. So I just want you to be aware of some of the conflicts that are going on. I'm also struggling a little bit with some of the numbers-
Tom, your time's expired. If you could conclude your remarks, that'd be great.
One just, one last one. Pete said earlier tonight, and he said it in the work session, that they were talking in terms of 2,500 to 2,600 units. Yet in Page 2 of your addendum that you received for tonight's meeting, in the first paragraph on Page 2, it talks of the approximately 2,898 units. So I'm a little confused, is whether it was 25, 26, 29, somewhere in that neighborhood, I guess, but I'd like that refined a little bit more. I'd like the numbers. Thank you.
And just, you know, it's my understanding from what Pete said, that if it built out to what Metro wants, it would be 2,898. We're recommending less than that to help keep that R-density down and 28-
Let's look at his chart.
Right.
He's got it here, low versus high, and see where you're at.
Thank you.
So we'll enter into the record as Exhibit Number 4.
And once again, can you point to the area on the map that he was talking about?
What?
That Tom was talking about.
You mean the upcoming one for Central Point Road? Or where he lives?
Should I look this right?
You're talking about where he lives.
What would you like to see, Commissioner?
Just what he was, the area he was talking about?
That's coming in, that they wanted. No, where he lives.
Yeah, I know where he lives.
The areas that are already built are the Finnegan's Way-
Right. You were talking about-
The area where I live?
Something coming up in the future.
Surrounded by R10.
Central Point and White Lane is over in-
It's not on that map.
Not on that, ma'am, okay.
It's somewhat relevant to legislative action before you.
Okay.
This is Central Point dropping down here, so it's right in here.
Okay, all right.
And that's on the agenda to come before you.
Thank you.
Haven't seen it yet. Thanks, Pete.
I do not have anyone else signed up to speak at this time. If anyone else would like to speak, please come on up and show out a card. Seeing one-
Don't be shy, we don't bite.
Hard, not very hard.
Speak for yourself, sir, Commissioner Mayby.
Okay, well, we will close the public testimony for this evening. As Pete indicated, we'll be looking to continue this to the next hearing, so if you have additional comments or you want to participate in the process, you're all welcome to come back next time.
So do you need a motion to continue to December 9th?
I do.
I have a question for Mr. Faust, if he might be able to come back up.
So give me the high sign when it's time, Tony.
So Steve, you probably, you probably don't have these statistics off the top of your head, but I am wondering, once again, for the record, if you could say, for the audience at home and wherever they're listening to this, and those who are in the audience tonight, the number of mailings that were, all the citizen projects, you did this before at a work session, but you had a list of how many mailings went out, how many meetings there were, how many neighborhood associations and other outreach that you went to. I just want that on the record again, since we're in part of the public hearing.
I'll do my best, and Pete would know better, the number of residences that received mailings, but we began the process by conducting, I believe, just seven basic telephone interviews with certain stakeholders that the city helped identify. We then went out to 17 neighborhoods, civic, school, other groups, as part of those community conversations. There were four large community meetings that were held and attended by approximately 100 at each of those.
And then what was the notification for those?
So for each of those, there was media release, so information posted in local newspapers. There was email notification, Facebook and Twitter that the city put on their accounts, as well as either flyers or postcards mailed to, and Pete can probably say better than I can what area those went to.
So when we did a flyer mailing for an open house, or, and I believe we did four of those, we noticed any, the neighborhood associations that were touching South End, so Kanema, Hazel Grove, Westling Farms, and South End, all received their membership mailing, got the mailings. Everyone outside the city limit in the urban growth boundary and everyone within 300 feet of the study area boundary outside of the UGB, and all the way down South End to the intersection with 9090 as well. So, just to make sure, because that was the impacted corridor, so.
That's just one mailing.
We did that four times.
That was every four times.
And then with the, with the orange card that went out, that went to 10,500 taxpayers in the city.
Additionally, we tried to drive people to the project website that had all the documents, calendars, opportunity to comment, and there were seven community advisory teams that were also open to the public and advertised through those various mechanisms.
Great. Any other comments or questions by the Commissioners?
I think, just if I could clarify, so, you know, we are requesting that you continue this hearing to December 9th, and at that point, either you'll make a decision to continue it, recommend approval of the City Commission, denial, you know, so we'll have that discussion on December 9th, once you have some more information in front of you. But I think it's important to note is that the record is still open. Anyone can submit anything in writing, email, they can come to the Planning Commission, they could come to the City Commission meetings, they can submit evidence anywhere along that time until the City Commission closes their public hearing. Obviously, the more that we can get in for the Planning Commission to consider, the better, but it doesn't preclude additional information being provided in front of the City Commission. So this is still an open, public process. Comments are being accepted, testimonies being accepted all throughout the way until the City Commission decides to close the public record and make a decision.
And then you also said that there is a, there is a review copy that's here at the front counter, and I'm assuming the website is still up, so people could look at documents if they haven't had an opportunity to look at that, so all of that's still there, and you want to give that address one more time?
Yes. The project website is www.southernconceptplan.org. And I want to point out that the project website was not on the orange card, just the city website was, so please go to the project website to see the documents.
And there's a link from the- Under meetings, under Planning Commission, under the agenda for tonight is all of the information that you've been provided as well.
I was just going to point out to the audience that you can download onto your computer, onto your iPad, all of the documents that are on the website. If you just go to the city website, go to the agenda for today's meeting, and every document that they have produced- document that they have produced, you can download and you can.
It's all under details.
Yeah, it's all right there. Each, each one of those is a little link that if you click on it, it'll open up the document, and you can save it to your computer, you can print it out, whatever you want to do with it. I did want to applaud the involvement of all the citizens. It, you know, it's obvious that there's, there's been a lot of activity and, you know, obviously some people are not going to hear about things, they're not going to recognize that it's important to them until maybe some time has passed, but I really appreciate all the participation to date, and I would encourage everybody to stay involved, and it's not too late to have some input. So get on that website and check out the documents if you have any questions. Pete, are we ready to take a motion?
Whether somebody has a question, is that important?
We have, we have a question, and we can take a question if you're okay with that. Any objection?
No.
No.
Okay. If you'll come forward, you need to come to the table to ask your question. State your name.
I'm Robert Wendling, in, living in the concept area, and the one question, I'm having difficulty reading the map on the website. I'm trying to figure out where in the heck I was, and that was difficult. Then the other item, I'm unclear exactly the process of approval. Is it my understanding that the commission, after all the testimony, decides yea or nay on the concept, and then after that, individual annexation takes place? I, I'm fuzzy on that. Do I personally, as a property owner, come to the commission or gather a group of neighbors to go to the commission for the annexation process? That's the one thing that I was having trouble with.
So tonight.
Thank you.
So tonight you've heard the concept plan, which is the take is how are we going to take this rural land and urbanize it over the next 20-plus years? And so the planning commission takes testimony, and they make a recommendation to the city commission, and the city commission makes the final decision. And so this is essentially a land use document. It amends our comprehensive plan map and it adopts certain code that's necessary to implement that. It doesn't annex property or approve any type of development. That's a separate process. And so once this is, assuming that this is adopted at some point in some form, then property owners can request annexation to the city, and it could be a single property owner or a group of them get together. We see both, but that's a separate process outside of this. So this process will not annex anybody into the city, it will not allow anybody to develop to city standards. This is adopting the plan to be implemented over the next 20-plus years. Does that answer your question?
Okay, very good. Robert. Do we, do we have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that we continue the public hearing on the South End Road Concept Plan to December the 9th.
Okay, I second that. And that's to, I'm sorry. That's to reiterate that the record is closed to public testimony and is set for deliberation or?
No, it's open.
It's still open.
We're open.
So anybody can make comments.
All right, I just wanted to make sure where we were at.
We're open.
You could, but I wouldn't recommend it at this point as we're bringing you more information on the night.
We could what?
You could close it, but I would not recommend.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure. I don't want to close it.
Okay.
I don't either. I just wanted to make sure we all knew what we were doing.
Commissioner Mayby.
I, and I guess I would say, under all the different types of testimony, the city commission is yet to have an interpretive dance, so.
He created.
Okay. Commissioner Hankins. Commissioner Mahoney.
Whatever your name is.
Got me, threw me for a loop there a little bit. Commissioner Mahoney.
I with a comment.
Uh-oh.
I find it very curious that Tri-Met and, and Metro's been mentioned here tonight, but I don't see anybody at the table commenting to the planning commission, because I think they've got a stake in a lot of these communities in the.
In Portland area. And I've yet to hear them respond with any testimony, and I think it's important to our public agency as well. And how many, how many notices did we send out?
I just asked that question.
There were over 10,000.
10,000?
10,000 Measure 56 notices.
One, two, three, four.
I don't know. I'm glad there's not 10,000 here.
Well, my point is, I applaud the efforts made for the reach out to the stakeholders and the process that went on in putting the plan together, but a little disappointed in Tri-Met, a little disappointed in Metro, a little bit disappointed in the public turnout. Good comments for those that were here, but where's, where's the response by the South End residents? I don't, I don't see it.
They're here.
So, yeah.
I mean, if we had that many notices go out, this place ought to be bulging at the seams, but it's not.
I just want to point out that Tri-Met and Metro agencies that have been involved on the technical side, and particularly with respect to Metro, they will be reviewing our Title 11 compliance report, which is a detailed set of set findings that they will need to review and respond to prior to your recommendation.
Well, I understand that, Pete, but, and I really do appreciate cooperation between various public agencies. That's what our tax dollars go for, and I think it's just a matter of on policy, not technique, on policy. And I don't want to get on a soapbox here, but I think it just.
Too late.
It's just polite to show up to a public hearing when you have stake, a stake in the, in the outcome. And we've long fought this battle of services by Tri-Met to Oregon City, and so I think those people are, wake up and come out here and get their oar in the water. That's all I got to say.
Get their oxen hipped.
Commissioner Gile.
I with no comments, and the interpretive dance is coming later.
Commissioner Resby.
Hi.
Commissioner McGriff.
I vote aye for continuance, and, but I will make a comment. As a member of the citizen advisory team, I wasn't exactly sure what I was getting myself involved in, but I think what I can say for the CAP members that are still here, that I felt it was a privilege to be able to work with many of you and get to know all of you, people that I didn't know before, and listen to, particularly I'd have to say Rachel, who's not here right now, but she had a lot of interesting things to say, things that I hadn't actually considered before, and I think it was, I think it was really good. I really appreciate the fact, and I apologize that during one person's testimony, I was flipping through my binder because I was looking for all the notices that I had in there, and I had a little stack of them of each of the meetings, and I received some of them personally, although I don't live in the South End area, but I have several friends and acquaintances who do live in the area, and I do appreciate the fact that, that while people don't want change, people did make an effort to participate and basically say what they wanted, and that's really what I was interested in hearing and is what I supported, because it's not really what I want. I don't live there, but I know that later on, as I continue to live in this community, what happens out there is going to affect me, but I really felt very much empowered by the fact that the people who live there are the ones that get to say about what happens, and that's really, really important. I mean, citizen involvement is my favorite saying, and I'm going to get T-shirts for everybody, doesn't mean you get what you're way, but it does mean you have the opportunity to participate, and I think the city, on some past concept plans, maybe, you know, people always can say, I didn't get it, I didn't get a notice, but I think you guys went up over and beyond the call of duty to really get notices out. And I can tell you that I personally got a number of phone calls and people stopping me, asking me about the orange card, which of course I could explain what it was, but the other notices, people would ask me, you know, gee, I got this thing about South End, should I go? And I said, heck yeah. Go to the community forums, go to anything, get online. If you're not comfortable with being online, you can call Pete, you know, unfortunately, Pete, I get out with your number maybe a little bit too much.
No problem.
And, you know, you were available to people, and I think that that was really important, and it's, you know, it's the thing we talked about at the meetings. This isn't going to happen tomorrow, it isn't going to happen next year. We don't know when it's going to happen, but it's better to have something planned, and I think Paul said it, is that in Oregon, we, things are different here, because we do take the time to figure out what we might want to have, and I'm not saying that this plan is perfect, because we might change it in five years when circumstances change and we have the ability to be flexible. But I think, you know, being involved in it, I really saw that the effort was really, really made. I, I mean, I have to say that honestly, because I've criticized the city in the past for saying, well, you didn't get enough notice out, you didn't do this. You did it. You really did it, and that's important, and I know it costs us a bunch of money, but I think that's an effort we have to continue to make. We have to continue to see it. So ladies and gentlemen of the audience, and ladies and gentlemen online, and ladies and gentlemen everywhere, if you get something from the city, don't throw it away. Open it and look at it. And if you don't want to do anything about it, fine, but at least look at it. It's not nothing, it's something.
Thank you.
Chair Kidwell.
I'll stay off my soapbox tonight.
It's under your chair, it's under your table.
So, thank you. So the South End Concept Plan legislative files continue to Monday, December 9th, 7:00 PM here at City Hall.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. So Tony, do we have any communications?
Yes, I'd like to just hand out a little bit of an update. Willamette Falls Legacy Project.
Unlock the locks.
I'm sorry?
I said unlock the locks.
Unlock the locks. We.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
As many of the planning commissioners are aware, as part of the Willamette Falls Legacy Project public engagement and master planning zone change process, there's multiple levels of communication that's, that's occurring with the community at large, with identified stakeholders throughout the region and within the city, several state, local agencies, and as part of this has been the creation of a partners group, and that is made up of two elected officials from each of the partners, so two electeds from the city of Oregon City, Clackamas County, Metro, and then the state of, state of Oregon, as well as the bankruptcy trustee. And we go back and visit with them and give them updates, much as we do with the other, with the community, as we're refining the opportunities and constraints on the Blue Heron property. We held our second partners group meeting two Mondays ago, and so I've provided you the minutes from that meeting, what we discussed, and some of the questions that we worked through as we held that partners group. Some dates for you to put on your calendar. Tuesday, December 10th, we're going to have a joint planning commission and city commission meeting to start, look at some of the concepts that are being refined on the Blue Heron property, so it'll be provide an opportunity to review what we have, provide comment, ask us questions, get the general direction of where we're going and the input from you.
What, what time?
It's going to be a work session, and we have it last, so probably around 6:00, but we'll, we'll get that solidified here right after Thanksgiving.
Is it only going to be like an hour or?
Well, we put it last so we could have enough time.
Oh, okay.
So we have two quick things before, right now, not to say that the agenda won't change, but I've asked for it to be at the end, so we could have as much time as we needed. And then on December 12th, it's a Thursday, we're going to have our third interactive event, it'll be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Ainsworth House here in Oregon City.
What was the date again?
Thursday, December 12th, 12:12.
So it'll be in the, the reception room, meeting room?
At Ainsworth House, yes. That information is available on the project website, Willamette Falls, rediscoverthefalls.com. Also, there, we're looking at a larger event at a Metro facility, it'll probably be January 22nd or 23rd, but it's going to be kind of further out there, and it's going to really be the culmination of the plan, so essentially the preferred plan, bringing together all the stakeholders that have been involved in this process and contributed effort and time and in many cases staff to help with that, the process and, and where we're at. At that point, we're going to be into our refined plan and working on the land use application, because that will be coming forward to you for the April 24th, 2014 Planning Commission for the first public hearing on the product.
Are we going to have any work sessions on this ourselves?
We're, we're running them jointly with the planning commission and city commission. Just trying to get as much input in the group as we can. We could certainly have a discussion about it, but, you know, we're hoping that, you know, whatever you've want to discuss, you can discuss with the city commission as well.
What's our, what's our target date for actually taking action on this?
First hearing will be April 24th.
April 24th.
Of 14, yeah.
Would it be okay if we had the work session on the floor instead of up on the dais?
I can talk to Nancy about trying to set that up, yeah.
Okay.
It's just diff, yes, we'll, we'll look into it, just trying to make sure we can accommodate folks who come as well.
If we're going to do that together, I think I'd rather have it in that format than.
Yeah, doing it up here is always weird.
Yeah, it's just difficult when we have anyone come to watch while we're on the floor. And getting microphones everywhere.
Yeah, the other problem is, is that if you're all sitting around, not all the computers work, these things work the same way. And if I, I sat at the end last time because I had all my South End documents, whereas other people didn't, and they couldn't look at the screen and see it, so it was like, that was just weird. The only, the only reason I, I, I would ask, I've asked about it, Tony, and I think I asked this at the very beginning of the process, is that while I'm sure there's probably nothing that I couldn't discuss with the city commission, our role in this is, is a little bit different than the city commission, and it would be really good for us, like we had an original meeting earlier that we kind of talk about, we talked initially about, you know, where, what we wanted to see, where we were coming from on this, and it would be really nice to sort of take that session, even though it's been a while, and sort of solidify that. And it's not that we're all going to agree when we get down to the end, but, you know, there's some pretty heavy-duty land use issues that we've got to really talk about and discuss, and I think it would be helpful if we had, you know, we're going to be more of the wonky side on this, as opposed to the city commission, who is not, and it would be really good for us to maybe, if we had some time, just to talk about it amongst ourselves. And I don't have any problem ever, you know, it's got to be a public meeting, but.
Sure.
Paul, are you?
Now, the question is, can you fit it all?
Yeah, can we fit it in?
Well, we'll, we'll go back, I'll go back, and we'll talk about it with our consultant team. We've got the meeting scheduled for the 10th, and I think, let's circle back and kind of see how that goes, and then I understand where you're coming from, and, you know, it may, it may be Christina and I coming in and doing the presentation.
Yeah, I mean, it could be closer to, I mean, I'm talking about sometime between January and.
Summit. And April, and April, so that we can, you know, here are the, here are the big key
points that we need to be looking at. Here are some things, you know, maybe Paul's going to come up with, well, what about the, you know, the, the water resources and the, you know, the open space land, and yep, am I channeling you good, Paul?
Well, it's a big project, and there's a lot of.
It is.
There's a lot of moving parts.
Well, and I agree with Denise that the work session we had about a month and a half ago was really useful, and I think if we could have a follow-up, taking where the plan is at, at this time, or, or maybe it's, maybe it's after the first year, but taking that plan and having some feedback on that. One thing I wanted to mention on just your calendar, for what it's worth, April 1st through the 15th, I'm going to be out of town, so that would be a bad time for me.
We won't do it then.
While you're saying that, is there anybody, I'm having, I can't make it on December 10th, I'm emceeing an event at Gresham City Hall, so I don't know if anybody else can't make it on the 10th, but wish I could be here for it.
It'll be televised.
I'll be on television out there.
Later, later. When you're in your privacy of your own home, you can put your bunny slippers on and.
That's right.
Sit back and enjoy it.
Can I ask?
Have a glass of wine.
Can I ask, who did the minutes for this? It's really detailed.
I think it was a combination of one of my staff members and Cogan's staff.
Good job, really detailed information, thanks.
Tony, Denise brings up a good point, as well as the rest. I think one of the problems we're having with the legacy thing, at least I'm having, is the identification of roles between the planning commission and the commission. Legal, legislative, who comes first, who recommends to who, it's a process, really. Part of the process, identification of open space, and by that I mean identification of public land. When we say open space and access, really what we're referring to is public-owned land. land down there. And it's got to be defined, and it, and it's got to be brought out into the open so it can be discussed. Sooner or later, there's got to be that aspect of that project identified, and that gets into the, who identifies that?
Well, I think that what you're going to see on the tenth are three scenarios, and they range in terms of developable area versus open space area. But, you know, remember that this is a concept. It's very similar to the South End Concept Plan in terms of, we're not, public's not buying it. Now, we can certainly identify it, um, you know, and I think that's going to be a discussion that, that we can have in terms of what the, you know, exactions are, and it's difficult in that we don't have a, we don't have a buyer, we don't have a property owner to negotiate with yet. So we're trying to set up and address as many of the outstanding issues as we can.
You're telling us to stay out of the weeds, right?
Well, no, I mean, we've, we've got to get into the weed. It depends how deep we want to go.
Right.
Right, because there are some answers that I can give you, and that they're, they're really good ones, you know, that we need to consider, you know, the transportation impacts, we need to address the infrastructure improvements, we need to, how are we going to ensure public access through this? What do we want to see down here? But, um, how much, how much of the acreage is going to be open space, and what percentage the developer going to pay, and what percentage is the public side going to pay on a total project cost? I'm not going to be able to give you at this time. So it depends on how much detail we want, right? So I think that hopefully, on this next work session, when you get a chance to kind of see the alternatives that we're looking at, so remember, providing specificity with flexibility was what we were charged with, and so we were trying to do that. And I think that as we see this, you know, the next refinement, we're going to get more specific. It's kind of like saying, "Okay, we've heard in from the two thousand-some surveys that have been submitted, and all the community conversations and outreach that we've done in farmers markets and open houses, and here's kind of what these look like. Here's some alternatives of how this could happen." And some of it is the same in each of the plans, it just makes sense, right? Main Street coming into the site from ninety-nine E, really makes sense. And then you've got these blocks that start to form, and those make sense. And so you've got some of them that are out of the floodplain, and those are, those make a lot of sense, that's where development should occur. Then you hit the floodplain area, and then you kind of get into, okay, you know, all that floodplain could be open space, but you could build in the floodplain technically by our code. So here's another scenario with a little bit more development, maybe, you know, in order to preserve some of the historic buildings, you're going to need resources around them to provide, um, access up to the buildings. For example, the Holly Building. You don't want to start breaking up that floor plate in order to put elevator, HVAC, ADA stairwell, you know, so you're going to need to build something next to it. And so maybe that's a little bit of development in the, in the, in the floodplain. And then a third scenario would be a little bit more development. And so we're going to start having those conversations. And so it is, it is a step-by-step process of trying to engage a large community, as well as the decision-makers and the trustee.
And we probably need to see, hear some of those members, because, you know, based on whatever scenario you pick, is really how the development is actually going to pencil it.
Right, and that's...
Be palatable to the, to the developer.
And, yep.
There'd probably be one that we'd all want, but would be impossible for anybody to make work.
Right, and with, uh, with Locai and Eco Northwest doing the, uh, economic analysis of it, you know, part of the presentation is discussing, you know, the realities of Oregon City property value, and, you know, some of the limitation that that imposes on some of the type of development we want to see there, but that because of the location on the river and access to the falls, how you can actually transform that property value down there. You know, this is, this is not a site that you're going to find anywhere else in the country. And so that is transformative in and of itself.
That could be a catalyst project.
Yep, yeah. And so, you know, and I know we've had these discussions before, Commissioner Mahoney, you know, plating streets, you know, but there's a discussion to be made there of, when we looked at the landfill, you know, we wanted a public road through the middle of it, but we didn't want to own the road on the landfill, because of the liability associated with it.
All that density that we're giving up in the South End, we can put down there, right?
Now, wait a minute, you're talking about traffic going through my neighborhood.
The other thing that Commissioner Mahoney mentioned was, uh, timing and responsibility, and, and, uh, I think from my perspective, the timing is that we come first, and we make recommendations to the city council to say, "This is the plan that we support." So...
And they should listen to us.
We don't make the final decision, but we're the ones that kind of drive, drive the bus down to them and ask them to approve that.
We're going to do all the wonky parts, well...
So we really have two products, the concept plan and the comprehensive plan amendment and zone change.
So we're calling it a concept plan now instead of a master plan?
A concept master plan.
Okay, concept master, I like that. We'll have a concept master plan. Conceptual master plan.
And that'll address the comprehensive plan amendment and the zone change, any TPR compliance requirements, mixed, well, mixed multi-use area designation, you know, those are land use decisions that need to come through Planning Commission, City Commission. Uh, the second document that's a, that's a product is the strategic plan. So it's starting to identify funding sources, what are projects that we could start to take down, you know, are there easier projects to do upfront that would really help keep interest in the property or catalyze investment in the property that we hope to take to all the jurisdictions? So city commission, county commissioners, metro, council, um, and that they would adopt so that we can say, "Look, our partners, we all agree on this. They've adopted it by resolution or, or some other form, saying, 'We agree with this strategy plan,'" which then helps us and the future property owner in going, whether it be getting grant funding or other forms of money that's going to be needed for the investment in this property.
Tony, what, uh, role is our Department of Economic Development with the city going to play in this? Because it seems to me, if, if we're really serious about economic development, that they'd get their, uh, two cents worth in as well.
Right, and so our economic development's working with the county, um, economic development, and, you know, really it's identifying, rather than, you know, there's going to be ten ways or fifteen ways to do this, right? Instead of saying, "Oh, here's the way to do it," it's saying, "Here's all the opportunities, here's all the possibilities," and laying those all out there. And then we have to decide, you know, what's the best way to make this happen, based on the tools that we have available to us, uh, to accomplish the reinvestment in this property that's needed.
Could any of those comments come before this commission, so that we can incorporate them into our findings to recommend to the city commission?
Yeah, I don't see why.
Because that's, that's, it's good information. Has there been any, any progress on the offer that was on the table?
Eclipse Development had made the offer, um, their, their contingent, or their, their offer was contingent on a second real estate deal closing, when it failed, the, when the original failed, it caused the second, the Blue Heron property to fail. So they weren't able to line up their financing. Uh, we continue to work with the trustee and CB Richard Ellis, um, meeting with folks who are interested about the property, um, so hopefully we'll hear something soon.
So at this point, there is not an offer on the table?
The property's not under contract at this point.
Okay.
I had a chance to go back and look at the, uh, presentation by the gentleman, the architect from Minneapolis, and I would recommend, if you weren't at that session, you should look at it.
Meyer.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
I think that'll do it.
I had a question for my fellow commissioner. How is it going with the sign code?
I was hoping that would come.
Sorry, I did, I, I, I went to the workshop and it was like, ooh, I left stressed out, I have to tell you. Stressed out.
It is going that there were, we've gotten a lot of comments, and, um, I'm really surprised at how many people don't want any fees associated with, um, signage regulations and...
That blew me away.
Any fees?
Yeah, they said they, most of the comments were, "Don't charge for any signs," and I was got, I was kind of looking at that going, "What?"
Wait, what?
Yeah.
Well, it was all the business owners who came through with their little red dots and, you know...
Well, no.
There were a lot of them there.
So, so the taxpayers are going to pay for, um, the processing of sign permits?
Sure.
I see.
So I, I think that there's a little bit of a disconnect, and so I, I think that when we talk about it here, you can kind of view it through that lens a little bit, um, as well as all, there's a, I was, a lot of people really want LED signs in Oregon City. And I was really surprised at that.
How about neon? I mean, uh, what, neon's pretty cool, like, some of the old style, I like it. Any discussion about that?
We don't really have much, much neon. I mean, we've got owls, and a few that are, you know...
You know, I don't like owls very much, but I love their sign.
The sign's cool.
Yeah.
We've got to have some retro in this city.
We don't have a lot of retro.
I love that kind of stuff, but, so, so it's the typical signs.
There's a whole graveyard of them down in Las Vegas, all the neon you'd ever want. Little moving arms.
Really too, those, those are just...
There's, there's a whole district on Interstate Avenue that's just awesome. My favorite one is the palms with the monkeys climbing up the, climbing up the palm tree, and, I mean, you know...
And at twenty after nine, is there any rapport with this?
But anyway, yeah.
So the sign code is still going on. They held their open house in their third, um, community advisory team meeting. Um, we have a fourth one scheduled for December, when the team will be getting back together, and we'll probably, hopefully have, you know, points of agreement and points for further discussion that'll be bringing back to the planning commission.
What's the, obviously with this disconnect, what's the outreach to the business community or the chamber to...
The chambers that involve...
Well, I know, but I mean, going to like a chamber meeting and it kind of explaining, I, I don't want the city to get, staff to get beat up, but, you know, it, it can't be free. You know, there is no free lunch with the sign code, or any code. It, it has to be paid for somehow, and user fees is really the only way that we can, we can, you know...
Well, otherwise it just...
Support that.
The cost burden goes to the taxpayer.
And I can't see people in the taxpaying public saying, "I'm going to pay for Fred Meyer's A-frame sign," you know, I, I just don't see it.
Tony, how much is that going to cost your department to process these applications, manpower-wise? And doesn't the fee pay, uh, cover that cost?
Well, you know, part of the, part of the issue is trying to expand the sign code...
Yeah, I can answer that.
To accommodate, uh, the public, signs in the public roadway, essentially A-frames, is something that, you know, we don't, um, it's not allowed under our current code.
But people are just doing it anyway.
Correct, and so how do we, how do we create a system where you can address that? I mean, if we're going to allow it, which I think it's, you know, there seems to be support for, but I mean, that's, that's the point of this, is to have that discussion. Somehow you've got to be able to address and regulate, and, you know, and that's going to be, that's going to be where we get into the details of how to do that. They went to a yearly sign fee for A-frames in the public roadway.
That's, yeah, that's what I was wondering what they did, and maybe, you know, I know we're borrowing and stealing liberally from other people, and I know Lake Oswego went through a process and...
We're just not reinventing the wheel.
So we're not reinventing the wheel, but we have to make, we have to come up with something that, that's right for this community.
Well, and I guess what I would say, if there is any outreach to the chamber and the, the good businesses of the community, is to explain that a fee helps, helps with regulation, that they're doing it right, it hel, it, it enables the city to ensure that everybody's doing it right, you know? And so, and I'm not, you know, and I, I, I agree that there were quite a bit, a few of those, but I mean, that's going to be a, you know, that's a financial responsibility of the city commission in determining how we're going to implement this. You know, I charge land use fees based on my time to process the, the issues, the enforcement part. You know, my bigger concern is, you know, how, what is our sign code going to look like? You know, I want something that we can implement relatively, a little bit more streamlined,